Okay, sorry. Join us for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have, do you have somebody that has signed up for the public comment section? So at this time, Mr. Taylor Keane, the floor would be yours.
First thing.
Thank you for coming.
You guys may discuss a lot, I'm sure you have discussed a lot of this already, just the school safety, security stuff, you know, it's basically, unfortunately, I have to even talk about it, but I think we're there. After Uvalde, my kids go to the primary in Pineville. Next day, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Vinisch, and he's always been, he's always real nice, real helpful. But it was, I was in the Army, you know, and security is one of the first things you learn, day one, and just became, it became real clear, just talking with him about what measures are in place, and you guys go off the federal guidelines, right? Which is good, you know, it's better than nothing. But it just became immediately clear that the school is 100% vulnerable to attack, because every measure that's in place is reactionary, there's nothing proactive to keep it from happening in the first place, you know? And I'm not saying that's anybody's fault, or, you know, but times are changing, I guess, unfortunately. So, more needs to be done. I don't know exactly, I don't know the answers, I'm not an expert about this, but there are people who do do this for a living, this specific thing, for prior special forces guys, high-level law enforcement, that consult this kind of thing for a living, you know, I don't know if that's ever been talked about, or, you know, if you guys ever thought about it, or maybe even done it already, I don't know, but I think that'd be a good starting point. Uniformed law enforcement officer, don't know what we'd have to do, get with the county, or, you know, you guys know the proper channels better than I do to implement stuff like this, but there's a lot more needs to be done, because like I said, it's 100% vulnerable, there's nothing stopping somebody from going in there and doing bad things, you know? And it doesn't really sit well with me, you know, as a father, and you, I know you guys care about the kids just as much as me and every other parent. So, I don't know what has been done previously, it's my first meeting, you know, I don't know what's been done previously, and what we can do to hopefully get the ball rolling on some of this stuff. I would not like to wait for the state or federal government to, you know, write legislation, I don't want to wait for that, I'd like to be a little more proactive and hopefully get something done, whatever that may be, sooner than later, you know? I don't know what you guys' thoughts on this, what, I don't know what's already been done, or, you know, what your stance is, but right now, it's 100% vulnerable to attack, but it doesn't sit well with me. Yeah, I don't know, like, there's consultants, you know, law enforcement officers, whatever we have to do, get with the county, get local legislation passed, find the money to get a law enforcement officer or something, you know? I don't, I don't know what you guys think, or, you know, collectively, I'm sure we could come up with something, a good solution, I don't think, it might not be a fail-safe solution, you know, no matter what, but it can definitely be improved, 100%. Yeah, that's about all I got, I don't know what would be the next step, you know, getting with the county, or, I don't know, I don't know where we go from here to get anything done, but what do you guys think?
Okay. Thank you, Tyler, very much for your comments. We appreciate that, your concern.
Is there going to be more discussion about it? Somebody had.
Later on in the, in the meeting, toward the end, we do have an agenda item for discussion on that. Okay, so we'll start, that was only sign-up, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move forward into the meeting then, we'll start with the consent items, which will be the agenda, minutes to the May 12, 2022 board meeting, minutes to the May 15, 2022 special board meeting, bills for the month of June and reconciled bills, finance report, resignation and employment, the enrollment dropout withdrawal report, transfer funds to zero teachers funds, the third and final reading of board policies, board policy update 2022A, and approval of the consent items. So, everybody's had a chance to look at the employment list. Okay, have a motion, Mandy, to accept the consent item, second from John, all those in favor? Six yays and one abstention from Josh. New business, Mustang Mountain Bike Club update, I assume that would be Mr. Lat. Our audiovisual is working.
Hello, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful. Well, we just wanted to provide a little bit of update about our season that we had, and it was an awesome first race season, even though it was our, our second season. COVID, you know, interrupted everything, unfortunately, but we, we had, we had a good showing and a good presence there, so let's go ahead and... So there's our team picture for this year, want to put that in the presentation, and moving forward. So this, just a little bit of information about NICA. NICA has grown this past year, it's now 33 leagues, 33 different states across the nation, and it's growing all the time. Missouri had over 400 riders last year, so we were blessed to be able to be a part of that, and it was, it was impressive. We were so excited to be a part of a groundbreaking sport in the state of Missouri.
We had a good-sized team, too. We weren't huge, some of them aren't huge, but, I mean, for a school, like, you know, a county team, you know, that we had, it, it was, we were well represented.
33 states is a pretty large number of participants so far, places that you wouldn't expect, like Kansas, very flat places where you don't have necessarily even mountains, but you can still design courses and train that way, so I wouldn't put it past going, you know, to all 48 states here.
There's a map showing the different leagues, and Kansas just came on, so hopefully Missouri, Kansas, and Arkansas can get some cross-state type events. Missouri is talking about in the upcoming years, doing some over-the-state race events with Arkansas. Here's a map of all the different leagues in the area, the teams, so there's one out of Neosho also, it's a composite, so it's made up of Joplin, Neosho, Carle Junction, and so I don't think they're nearly as big as we are.
I think they had like six.
Yeah, so, and we had 15 last year on the roster, nine active racers, so.
Sure, yeah, some of the benefits of mountain biking, why we're passionate about it, and this doesn't include everything, but one thing about it, it's a lifelong sport, I know people that are in their 70s that are still mountain biking, they have new technology too, where people are riding e-bikes and electric bikes to be able to ride well in their 70s, outrun any of us. Individual and team success, so they can celebrate their own victories, but they also contribute towards the team, a lot like cross-country in that sense, it really is similar to that except it's cross-country mountain biking, it's family-oriented, parents, siblings all show up to practices and cheer along, they go camping with their kids, that's one of the few sports that we, that parents can go out and fully practice with their children, it'd be hard to do that with a lot of sports like football or baseball and things like that, but they can, most, a lot of the parents ended up actually going and riding with, and we set up a thing for them to go and, and train themselves at times.
Moms run lives.
Well, and many dads got involved also, in fact, we have a couple that are going to, they're, they're in the process of becoming coaches as well, so they're going to be coaching alongside of us, so that's, that's really exciting to see, it's become a whole family affair.
That was definitely an unexpected outcome from that, because we didn't think that, I mean, you just don't anticipate that the families are all going to grow together, and these are all county families, and they've gotten to know each other and organize events and stuff on their own, so that was a really neat thing to see as well. They get out and see nature, they get out and see different parts of the state, we'll be all around the state in races, develop friendships, and we're talking about sixth through 12th grade, so a lot of the kids that don't know each other, because they're at different schools right now, got to know each other really well through the, through the experience of going through mountain biking, so.
And up there, the pictures that we, we chose to put on this slide, upper right-hand corner is our pit zone, that's where we rendezvous for all of our races, so we set up every week on Saturday morning, and you notice we've got a couple of McDonough County Mustang tents, and so that was specifically created for our mountain bike team, and so then we had some parents design and make bike stands, and they called it McDonough County Corral, and so I thought that was really cool.
That's cool.
They took the initiative to do that, you know, and they wanted something to be there for, for their kids, so that their bikes weren't laying all over the place, and so we, we wanted to try to be as organized as we can, especially as we're growing. Picture on the left is Elliot, he is working on bike maintenance, so that's one of the things that we had to teach the kids, you have to be able to take your bike tire off or fix your bike chain in the field, because if you do it, and you, if you don't do it, and you have to ask a course marshal for help, then you get a penalty. So we took an entire session and we taught the kids how to pop off their own tires, how to change out a tube, put it back in, air it up, and, and get going as quickly as possible.
You have the chain and how to maintain.
We taught them how to lube up the chain, how to wash it correctly, and all that stuff. The bottom picture is they're at the Pineville Bike Park, and so we're lucky to have some equipment down there to be able to practice on as well, but most of our practices do happen at Morse Park in Neosho with those eight miles of trails, and we do go down to northwest Arkansas on weekends, and we practice riding some of the more manageable So again, we had 15 student riders in grade six through nine. We podiumed every single race, okay? I'd say out of the nine racers, we had, I think, five that podiumed. So all the kids made remarkable improvements, which was really excellent to see, they were so pumped. Once a month, we would do a time trial at Morse Park, so basically, that's where we hit a stopwatch, and each kid is there doing the course, same course, once a month, and we charted their times, every time, they got faster and faster, which was really exciting to see, and they got pumped about it, and it became a race, you know? And we had a few girls that were really trying to show up the boys, too, so, and, and that's the great thing about NICA, is that it's all-inclusive, it's not just a boy's sport, it's not just a girl's sport, it's a sport for everybody.
Yeah, and the teams all really do get along together, except for this one incident where that shark gun had to have a throw-down with him, that's him being the costume.
We had the dams office, it was harmless.
It's, it's pretty fun, though, the race events are.
The environment is just so welcoming for everybody, you know, families that come in to support their, their racers, you know, we have a lot of fun, you know, with the, the blow-up mascots, and then the, the final championship race, we all decorated our tents up for Halloween, and we all dressed up in, in costumes, and they had a big contest, and, and so it, it was a lot of fun, and the kids go out there and they play games together, football, frisbee, cornhole, things like that, so. And we did have a fourth overall in the B wave for the freshmen, so that, that was really cool.
The, this, one, one of, the boy that was in the front there, he, he learned to ride a bike, was it two months?
Two months before joining the team.
Two months before he joined the team, and?
Yes.
He.
And he was one of our most improved riders.
Exactly.
Yes, he made a lot of progress. So this shows a little bit about our, our race season, and there's some pictures of the kids racing, them receiving their, their medals. Okay, we can go ahead and move forward. This is our race venue for this upcoming season, so we'll be at St. Joe, August 27th to 28th, and then we'll go to Springfield, at the New Fellows Lake Park, and then we're going to go back to Warsaw, that was a great race venue, the kids had a lot of fun there. Then we'll go to Jefferson City, and then the last championship race will be at Two Rivers. If you've never been out there, it's, it's a great area to just take the family and go ride bikes, hike, stuff like that.
Close enough for you guys to go watch one.
Yeah, it's absolutely different.
Bring your tents, campers.
What is that, what's the city this right near? I don't know if they know where to hide whatever.
Nixet.
Nixet, yeah, it's not far, yeah.
Yeah, it's not far, yeah, so. So we have some, some goals, you want to talk about that?
Sure, we, some of our goals that we're looking forward to for season three, I really want to see our team continue to grow, it has, we expect it to keep going as word spreads, first year that we promoted it to students, and they kind of, they have some lengths there, like, you know, what are you talking about? But now that we have actual word of mouth and documentation and, and all the successes, a lot of excitement had built since then, so I think we'll have a great team this year, good size, a lot of, most everybody's returning.
We're working on our student leadership, too.
Yeah.
Getting those returning riders to help the newer riders out.
Another thing that we emphasize is showing class at these events, we had tons of compliments, our kids were always out helping after, after the races, there's, you have to break everything back down, and nobody wants to do that, because it's been a hard, hard couple of days, but our kids are always, without even being told, getting out there, doing everything just automatically, I mean, it's, it makes us super proud to see that, there's just something that's, that's in them, you know, we don't, we don't have to tell them to do these things, they just, I don't know, I don't know.
You might want to talk about the video with Noah.
Sure, yeah, and, you know, for an example, even, we have to, have to even tell our team members sometimes, hey, you know, you, you do, like, because one of our students got behind one of the students that was slower than him and caught him, and he stayed behind him during the race to, to push him on, giving up some of his, you know, spots, because he was so busy trying to make sure that the other student did his best, and so, so that's great, we do want you to go ahead and do it next time.
He was just, he was just motivational speaking, we, we got it on the GoPro, he was motivational speaking for him, like, the whole ride, it was, it was sweet, it was really.
And the great thing, as a coach, is having other coaches and other, other teams come to us and say, hey, I just want to tell you that your kids represented you very well, and in a positive manner, we had that over and over at all the different race venues, so the Mustang Mountain Bike Team really had a great positive showing in, in the state of Missouri, so.
We want to continue with that, making a positive impact in the community, our local community, we've tried to be present in different events that we've had, some of the, you might have seen us in, in some of the parades and things like that going around, but we'd also like to be able to help out in volunteering and, and other things as well, they do get points for that, for, for volunteer services, so we want to really build on that, so.
And they started racing outside of our, our, our events, and started doing some local races, too, to.
So, and it just goes without saying, on this next slide, you know, we're, we're trying to help push our students, our riders, to, to be all that they can be, you know, a lot of times, they don't have a lot of confidence in themselves, and so through mountain biking, they have discovered that, hey, I've got some real talent here, you know, and, and just the camaraderie, I, I hear the kids, sometimes they'll be down on themselves, so there's, there was a couple of times when I had to take individuals aside because they did not get the place that they thought that they should, and I just talked to them about, listen, you're going to race another day, you know, but you, what can you learn from this? And so we talk about that, and we coach through it, because kids are really tough on themselves, but, you know, they were very receptive to the feedback from all the coaches, and they, they did a really good job of making corrections throughout the, the season, and so I'm really excited to see what this season is going to develop into.
And our teams are pretty, are, they're pretty young, and so, but we had two freshmen last year, and so eventually, like, I see a goal of getting them to the point where they could get mountain bike scholarships, because that, that's a thing now, so that's something I would look to.
So, just some basic information about the race course, move forward. Some of the stuff that the, the kids have to have, I just want to put this in here for those of you that might not know, so let's go ahead. But most of all, we want to say thank you for your support, it's been really exciting to see that this sport developed, because it, it fills that niche for kids that may not be an organized team person, you know, even though they're on a team, it's an individual type thing, and so they can be a part of something, and, that still be on their own and polish themselves.
And we have, we have Les Schaefer, he's another employee, right, and then, and then Miriam Palmer, we've got, like, several people from the district that are, I don't know.
And many of our athletes have never played a sport before, they didn't consider themselves an athlete at all, I'm talking with their parents, they, they said, I never thought, one of the boys that was pictured back there, his parents just said, I never thought he would, he would want to continue on this, we tried one time, and he just had so much heart, and pushed himself, and improved, and improved, and improved, you know, it's what you want to see as a coach so much, and as, as just as a, someone who wants to make a positive impact in people's lives. I've coached football and basketball, and I can tell you, I've never seen the, the impact that this has on students compared to all those other sports, so.
Here's a quick little promo that we have for the team. What questions might you have that we can answer for you?
Pretty awesome video, not, not, not a question, but, you know, I think just any of our, you know, sports, events, you know, stuff like this, you know, kind of, they kind of go as the sponsor goes, so I think, I think we should be kind of saying thank you for you guys for kind of spearheading, getting this going, and obviously a positive reward.
Did you tell them how many team bikes?
How many team bikes? So, yeah, the foundation purchased two team bikes for us this season, which will be put to use, and then we received last year, three team bikes through a TREC scholarship, and this year, we'll receive another two.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is there a cost for the kids?
Yes.
I mean, what do you, I know you do scholarship type stuff, too, but I mean, what is the average, so I wanted to come and do it.
Yeah, the, the pay to play is $300, it includes the insurance and the race fees, and then the NICA, NICA national fee, and then a good chunk of families have been able to afford that, but then there's been some that couldn't, so there is a scholarship application through NICA, and to date, anyone that has applied has received a portion of that. They, they do require, like, some money, like, usually it's like $250 is what they get a scholarship for, and then $50.
And they need to purchase the bikes and stuff, I mean, or?
If they have a bike, then we encourage them to, because a mountain bike is very unique for a person, you, it's like driving a car, you know? But if you don't have the means to do that, we have had donations, we have these team bikes, and so we'll get the, we'll get the kids hooked up, yeah, but we want them to have their own bike eventually, and so there are organizations in, in the county that will help kids get their own bikes, too, so.
Other questions?
I know, well, just a comment, I, great program, just another area, like Josh said, to allow kids opportunity to be successful, and that's what keeps kids in school, that and, oh, I know one thing in talking to Adam about this, is the important, importance that, that they fall underneath the umbrella of the school district, to help cover liabilities and, you know, things that, that might, and, oh. And you guys, if I remember right, we'd have to check the minutes, but Kathy originally approved the program of the bikes.
Yes.
Absolutely. We appreciate you guys.
Coaches, so anybody has, let me know, we'll, we'll train you up.
Coach Corrigan.
Yeah.
I think I've already asked him.
I am closer to 70 than most. I'll be right there.
Hey, we need mechanics, too.
That may be.
I'm out.
I think maybe central office should have somebody in it, Will, you know, maybe.
Sponsor firsthand experience.
Get a bicycle built for two.
I was just thinking of that, one for you in the front, me in the back with coke and bonbons, and I can whisper motivational thoughts to you as you.
Are we on, that's a picture that I.
Are we out? I think we're live, are we live? Okay. Mr. Sorrell, you might as well go ahead and take the podium, then.
I mean, we're always on the cutting edge, right?
You can continue your show, right?
I don't have that visual right now, I just got it.
I'm actually here to, on a serious note.
Thanks, guys.
Seeking approval of the proposed, or, 2022 and 2023 elementary handbook, I think we got a copy of the actual handbook, and with what provisions that we have added, don't think we want to read all 50-something pages, but if you got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
I have one. Yes, me, sir. On the field trips, on allowing parents to ride the bus, we do not allow that?
We do not, it was just, we changed the verbiage in there to match our policy, our policy is that, I believe, insurance only covers people who are employed by the district and our students, and so as long as I've been here, we've never let anybody that I know as a parent ride the bus, but we just found that error, corrected it to make sure it matches the policy. A lot of times, parents follow the bus, too.
Right.
Where we go on the.
I had a question on the marijuana section regarding CBD oil, is that a state requirement that, and CBD is over the counter, not psychoactive, I didn't, I didn't understand why CBD oil was listed on there.
I believe that was a recommendation from SBA, I believe, am I correct?
Correct. Is that what it said, verbatim? I don't know.
It's, it comes from our, our school board policy that you guys have, are working.
I don't know, I give my dog CBD oils.
I don't think kids will have in school, they'll be passing it out and, you know? Cause that's what, but if you allow it, that's what will be happening, they'll be passing it out, they say, well, it's not illegal, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the.
Kid possibly wearing a patch to help with ADHD. That's to put that patch on in the nurse's office.
Yeah.
Then it becomes a liability then. That should be before, after school medications.
But they do at home probably, at home, school, school.
Other questions or comments on the handbook?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, have a motion from Andy, accept the handbook. Division second by Bobby, all those in favor? Clay?
Hi. Round two, I am here to present the, uh, high school handbook. And as Kern said, you guys were presented with the handbook and the changes. Most of ours were things recommended by the MSBA. There's, there was one that, um, we looked at our vaping policy and we revamped that just a little bit to, we're going to change how we present the vaping classes. It wasn't consistent, the way we were trying to do it. And so we're looking at a program out of Stanford that new kids get charged with vaping, they go to ISS and they go through this program. It's online and it's very regimented and it will be more consistent and that's really the only change we made. And I think that'll benefit our kids in a positive way. Um, do you guys have any questions? Uh, most of the others are MSBA related, uh, things that a lot would be, we just didn't necessarily have them in writing, we added those.
You're making this too easy, I was.
John?
You make us some questions.
I could ask the same question, but we've already answered it.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the.
Okay, have a motion from Andy to accept the high school handbook. Second from Bobby, all those in favor? Ananmas, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Cobra Lee. Are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good.
I'm here to present the end of your bus mileage reports. I guess I should have a copy of that. Total miles this year was a few less than last year. I think that's probably due to we consolidated some routes, mainly due to shortage of drivers. But one, one interesting thing that I saw there was that our ECSE miles almost doubled. I don't know the explanation for that, other than they're, they're recruiting a lot of new students there. Basically the only real differences I saw in the report from that, this year and last year.
How did that compare like to, hate to say it, pre-COVID type stuff with the?
Did you, did you get the summary sheet? Okay, there should be a summary sheet there for the last few years.
Pre-COVID was back to.
Pre-COVID was, was higher than now.
Like things like trips and stuff, you can see it kind of, kind of things are opening back up a little bit.
Probably going to see that increase next year because we're kind of expecting more students to be coming back into the riding buses.
Questions guys for any?
You know what our average mile per gallon is?
Route miles are about eight miles a gallon on our diesels, probably about six on our gasoline. On trips though, the diesels will get, uh, nine to 10 miles a gallon.
Questions? Okay, have a motion from Dennis to approve, second by Josh, all those in favor? Thank you. Mister Leonard?
He does have the bids from the, uh, proposals that we posted last month with your permission. DNA, uh, who's one of our vendors that is trusted with our district. Uh, their bid came in at 338,680 dollars. And that's for a complete upgrade of every surveillance camera in the district. Six servers to store the video. Retention date about 40 days on that video. Cameras are guaranteed for five years, um, for everything except lightning strikes. So, you know, in five years, we probably would need to start revisiting again, taking it in phases then, instead of the whole district. You know, phase in a handful of buildings. This is equipment that runs 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year, so. It can wear out quickly. I mean, some of our cameras in the district are probably 12 to 15 years old right now.
Is that a one for one change out or?
It's adding some, there were some buildings that didn't have their front entrances, cameras on them, but we've addressed that with this.
Gotta get all of those covered?
Correct. All of the exterior doors, uh, will be covered. Of course, the front entrances will be covered as well.
I think, I feel like we saw the, I feel like we saw these, the folks, the digital, like digital watchdog folks, I feel like we saw them at the.
At Kansas City.
At the Kansas City, I don't feel like.
Yeah, they've got a, uh, a good strong, a good foothold in K-12 market.
Yeah.
They're a popular product.
Later and not, not necessarily for the bid, but I'm assuming for their, for their software they got, cause, cause obviously it sounds like we can install it on PCs, mobile devices.
We can, um, and that was one of the issues we have now, some of our older DVRs are only able to run on PCs and not able to be on mobile. On Mac OS, so digital watchdog will run only.
As part of that bid, I mean, do they, like, do they help us kind of set up like any like alerting and stuff? Or I guess do they give us some kind of administrative rights to do ourselves?
Yeah, I'll be, uh, super, super admin and then the principals will have access to the cameras in their buildings.
Okay.
Local storage, cloud based or is it as far as the?
The storage will be stored here, uh, but the cameras are able to be viewed in the clouds. And principals would be able to view those anywhere in the world and scroll back up to 24 hours on their phones.
Mister Gordon have access as well?
That would be a decision from the superintendent.
What happens to the old cameras?
Uh, some of the newer ones that we bought, we're going to keep on the shelf, um, for if one were to go down, we can switch it out quickly. But the older ones will be demoed by J.
Probably this bid would include any new structures that are going to be going in.
I, that was my next question.
That's what I was just thinking, where he's going with that.
Um, we can look at that as we bring the FEMA shelters on, we can certainly.
Get access to those new structures, hallways, classrooms, storm shelters.
Well, absolutely, look at that.
Yep.
Sweet, okay.
There's about a 45 to 60 lead time on cameras right now, so we'll be pushing it to.
How far?
Forty-five to 60 days, so we'll be pushing it to get them in before school, but luckily the cables are already pulled at the high school cause we, we kind of anticipated this coming. So last summer we pulled those cables from the new camera locations. Uh, they're being, those new cables are being pulled up onville elementary this week as well, so.
I missed the, uh, the, uh, the advertisements, but are there some cameras that are addressable where you can, like your parking lots where you can?
P and T's, I mean, there are.
Face recognition or something.
Correct, license plate recognition, that's, yeah. The, the quality of these cameras compared to what principals are viewing now will be life changing. I mean, it'll really be an advantage to us.
Yeah, cause it wasn't, yeah, the mega fixes is. Sounds like a plan.
Any other questions, Bobby, you got it?
No, I don't think so, I. I'm good.
Not a question, but I think when, when we get it, I mean, definitely like play around with software, just. I mean, I don't, I don't need a super admin, if you can give me like, I can't break anything right, so it's fun to play around with. Learn some stuff.
Okay. And so like on those though, you say, you know, we can have the access to, uh, whoever we want to, is, is that something pending further discussion, law enforcement could have?
Absolutely.
Access to those things?
Yep, absolutely. We would just have to create them as a, be the water park account and give them the access to the buildings that we guys, that we're going to have access to. They will be able to VR cameras in the, in the case of an emergency.
Yeah, also means we should be able to alert them to, I'm guessing if they have an account, we should be able to push. I'm guessing I'm out of the software, but I'm assuming if they have access, we could.
Yeah, and I don't know with our emergency notification system crisis go with, if they're. Yeah, I've done that at other districts, given the police a way into VR cameras.
It's, uh, the funding for this, uh, comes out of the S R money, so it's already budgeted and approved by the state. Although it's about, it's a little higher than we anticipated, Joy will be able to ask for modifications in the budget.
We had gotten some preliminary numbers last summer, so from there to here, price increases and things.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It was cheaper last week than it is this week.
Just as all, I'll make a motion, we accept Robyn's recommendation on the, on the bid.
Okay, have a motion from Josh to approve, second by John, all those in favor? Thank you, you're still up, Brian.
I am, one more, uh, I am requesting to go out to bid to purchase some new Chromebooks. Uh, that is a grant provided by the state and that money is 100% reimbursable to the school. Uh, we have $118,000 in that budget, uh, so we would expend it, pay it, send that paperwork to the state and they would reimburse us that full amount.
And we've used a portion of it previously and you guys approved that, but we found that there was some additional money there. If you allow.
You're just a money finding team, aren't you?
Team is a good.
Absolutely.
Questions on that or?
I'll make a motion, we, you have permission to seek bids for Chromebooks leveraged in that program.
Okay, motion from Josh, second from John, all those in favor?
First I have the Parents as Teachers Program Review. Um, I've provided it to you with the stats. Delana Fuller is our one and only Parents as Teacher educator. Guys, what she does is phenomenal. Going into homes with her and watching her screen kids, she just, she is such an asset to our district, so. It's a one-person show and she does a fabulous job.
Yeah, that's an amazing amount of visits and screenings.
And if you're with her, those mamas are texting, getting ahold of her, reaching out to her all the time.
Right.
If you've ever seen her car. She has everything in the car.
Now, the 285 total family visits was this year, Brian, I mean, by her.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, we probably have better numbers than people who have multiple staff members.
Right, anybody have questions for Joy on this? We need to approve it then. Okay, have a motion from Bobby to approve, second. Second Josh, all those in favor? Ananmas, I think that you're still up.
Next I have the A plus program review and the A plus program is the, um, program by the state of Missouri that provides two years of college tuition at either a community college or a tech, trade, technical school for high school seniors or after they graduate. And the numbers this year are pretty consistent with what we had last year. And I think there were 57 seniors this year, I think it was 59, 60 last year, so it's, it's staying pretty consistent. Mister Beechner being hired as the career liaison at the high school. I really expect to see him do some pretty incredible things if you are ever there over there, he is hooked up and engaged with kids. So, um, next year, I'm kind of anxious to see what those, what those numbers are. But this, this really gives a bunch of our kids a great start into college without accruing a bunch of debt.
Uh, several years ago, I want to say numbers were way up there, like nineties. I mean, it's been quite a while, they were first started, the first few years, I, I even had a hundred.
They have added some test scores to that, that have limited those that qualify.
Questions for A plus?
Looking forward to see what Mr. Beechner will do with it, I think so, I think Martin's below that, no, it seems like he's a super engaging guy, so I think he'll. Get out there and hopefully pull a few, few more kids in.
Huge asset force.
So we'll need to approve this. Motion from Andy, second from Bobby, all those in favor? Ananmas.
Next I. I have federal programs review, that includes Title One. Um, Title Two, which is teacher training and recruitment, Title Three, which provides us funding for our English language learners, our immigrant students and Title Four, which also is for learning intervention supports. We use the bulk of our money to employ staff to work directly with students. I think it's about 10 teachers altogether and about 10 paraprofessionals that the program funds in addition to professional development, paying for some substitute teachers and, um, other learning materials. in addition to professional development, paying for some substitute teachers and, um, other learning materials. We serve title programs in all of our buildings with the exception of the middle school and the high school.
Alright. Questions for, for Joy on the title, federal programs?
Joy, thanks for including some of the, the staff member names, cause it's nice, like, pop them in our door or something, so.
I'm trying to get you a directory that has little pictures too, that's what I like.
There you go, yeah.
We're working on that.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
I think I'm going to make a motion to approve the federal.
Okay, have a motion from Andy to approve, second from Bobby, all those in favor? Anamis?
The very last thing is super easy. We have to have an early childhood calendar. It apps, it mirrors exactly our regular calendar, except there's an AM and PM session, so... But we still have to have the early childhood calendar.
Alright, I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion from Josh, second from Bobby, all those in favor? Anamis?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
Mr. Gordon?
Alright, uh, the first thing I have is a bid, I'm asking for acceptance of the bid for the shelter through Mustang Academy. Uh, the bid came back from Atlas Safe Room at thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. Um, which is a little bit below probably where I thought it was going to land, but we're also going to do some things as far as where we're going to put it. It'll be, uh, on the backside of the building that's already there, uh, in the, in the maintenance area. Um, after learning more about those shelters, they're not necessarily, uh, weatherproof. Like the ones that they put in in the ocean and stuff, or it doesn't seal everything out. Where this will be, it's already inside, so it will be probably in a better location for us and our needs. It's about a ten by twenty-three, ten by twenty-four, uh, structure that will be used to house everyone at the academy uh, in case of a, of an acti-activity.
And it's going to be where?
Uh, in the academy, in the backside, where the, in the, in part of the shop side.
Okay, it's going to be in the shop.
So we're also doing some things at Pineville, uh, at the farm to kind of open up some space there.
And that would also allow the OPA workers entering. Maintenance being open.
Yep.
What's our capacity for students in that building?
Uh, normally you won't see over thirty, uh, there's been thirty-three out there at a time, but, uh, all at one time, we're, we're normally...
So if there's a few more in the building, it might be a little tight.
Well, this is, this is based off of the, that's one thing that was asked, if for some reason something was going on
and OPA had a, a deal where there's more people. Uh, that is based off of the five, uh, the five square feet per person. If an emergency was happening, more people could have...
Yeah, so maybe you could get a little more to be in.
Is there a lead time on this?
Uh, we're hoping to have it done by, for August first is what we're hoping. If we, if we can get, you know, the okay and everything.
Comes in pieces.
Yeah.
You install it?
They, they will install it, yeah.
That's good, I mean, that's what we talked about, we needed to address that location as we...
Right, that's the one we needed to, to take care of too. Just to...
Yeah, because they're, they're, they're pretty far away from anything.
Yes.
It's confident it's big enough to...
I think for that, I mean, unless, I think we're going to have bigger problems if it, if it expands past that uh, as far as the, the structure itself and what we'd have to do. So if it stays where it's at there, yeah, I think we're okay.
I'll make a motion.
You okay? I was going to say, you had any... Andy, Bob, anybody? Okay, I have a motion from Bob, second from Andy, all those in favor? Anamis, thank you.
My next item of business is brush hogging. Uh, last year in June, David Holloway was approved, uh, won the bid, uh, for a one-year initial with an option of two years to renew. This would be the first of two years to renew. Uh, it's set at the three thousand dollars. With the prices of fuel and everything, uh, I would recommend that we hold on to it and extend it out another year. Brush hogging services in our district.
I'm surprised he didn't want to rebid. Something does.
He may not want to go through the, back at the, go back out, but yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Questions on that or comments?
I'll make a motion, we accept Robyn's recommendation on brush hogging.
Okay, have a motion from Josh, second from Dennis to approve the brush hog bid. You abstaining, six, A and Andy.
And then my, uh, last item of business is the Jane property. Uh, in the past, we leased it for several years. Uh, we had a bid come in, uh, from Mr. Bill, Bill Elliott, uh, for the same amount as, as he did last year, like a thousand dollars. Uh, I would recommend that we, at this point, continue to lease that out until we have more clarity on, on what our goals are with it down the road.
Can there only be a, right? He was...
Yes, sir.
Listen to that one. I'll make a motion, we accept Robyn's recommendation for the Lee property bid.
Okay, you have a motion from Josh to accept, second by Bob, all those in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Uh, Dr. Stanton?
Yeah, with the new Director of Curriculum starting July first, uh, you have before you the job description for that position. We need effort, so she can start July first.
Did you write this after the curriculum director accepted the position?
Uh, way like the work in progress.
I wonder if he sent it to the curriculum director and you wrote that? Do we still have a curriculum?
Donna has seen it.
So, like, run, run.
Supercity, thank you that you already accepted it. Awesome. That is quite a list. It's well patterned after when Mary was here, has her car. Yeah, so she'll, you know, there were a few little lingering things out there previously that Madonna will take those back over as part of the central office team.
I like the other duties as a son. Yeah, that's how, that's the hook. I think this is, this is, this is, this is, this role looking field and it's important, especially, it feels like nowadays, it feels like everything you see on the news, it's just cost a whole lot, or the focus will be good.
I can only, I can only speak for a small group, they're very tight. To have this and, and have them claim on board to do this, so. Comments from anybody or questions on the job description?
I like line sixty-one.
Okay.
That's my favorite.
Okay, have a motion from John, second from Bobby to approve job description. Anamis? Okay, um, probably every one of you have had more than one discussion, either in person, by email, by phone call, by text, by whatever, after the events that happened in Texas within the last couple of weeks. And so, um, we just decided that we needed to get something on the agenda that somehow the discussion has to be started to make sure that, uh, we're doing everything we can to make sure our staff, our students, that everybody is safe in the best way, protected that we can be. Uh, you know, we, we had this discussion four years ago, five years, no, uh, I know Jeff was still on the board, so five or six years ago, we talked about several different scenarios, ideas of things to do. We started trying to get the cameras in, getting our doors locked, getting secure entrances, made a lot of improvements at that time on, on several things, but as, you know, we, we've seen in the last two weeks, I don't think we can not continue to be diligent to discuss and ask and look for ways to improve. So, we wanted to get this out here tonight to the board to, first of all, so that people watching and people that have been inquiring know that we didn't disregard comments and, and questions about it, that we do take it serious. And I don't know if this is a brainstorming type session, or if this is the beginning of trying to plan some work sessions to, to look for ideas, uh, on how we want to continue to try to be better on those things. So, I know Dr. Stanton and I talked just a little bit, you had a couple of ideas. Maybe you want to throw those out there for as far as consideration or...
Well, I mean, I, I think, just as Taylor did, I think that it'd be really important to pull together, you know, a, a team of people to begin the process to look at it, and I'm talking about our people, you know, as one piece of this, with our administrators, our teachers, our support people, you know, board members obviously, our SROs, uh, you know, being a part of that and, uh, be able to ask questions, listen to, um, the people about what their concerns are, what they see on a daily basis. I mean, I'm not at Pineville Primary every day, I'm just like Taylor, I drop Freeland off some days and pick her up some days, you know, that's... Uh, but, you know, the secretaries there in all our buildings have a really great idea of some of the vulnerabilities and things that they would like to see improved, but, uh, I think it'd be really important to get that feedback from, from those folks. And then, uh, at, at some point, come back and, and visit with the board in a work session uh, to allow those ideas to get to you and, and then allow you all to make some decisions on where you go from, from there.
Okay, I know our, we, we use Crisis Go, correct?
We do.
Do they offer an evaluation service? Yeah, I know there are professional groups out there, right? One of them in Kansas City last fall, that, that's what they do, is, is they, they do security and protection. I just didn't know if, if the Crisis Go team, if they offer an evaluation process, an inspection process, or...
Something you might look at is, is getting together with other districts too, to share that cost. Um, I know Springdale just had a huge, um, meeting this week and they brought in all these other districts and they all compared notes and maybe somebody could take something back. And they had some professionals come in and, and talk to them about what they could do. But it's a completely different scenario, those buildings are new. These buildings were built back before you even heard of a school shooter.
Sure.
And that makes us a different ammo altogether. But, you know, we might think about incorporating some of these other districts, because they're going to face the same thing we face.
Sure.
And maybe we could share that cost or maybe come up with some ideas from, from other places.
Well, and you have Buck here, and Buck's going to be our safety director next year and, you know, he'll be able to, he'll give us a lot of good insight as well.
To answer your question, no, Crisis Go doesn't offer that. Uh, Alice, who is what, what we use our training model based off of for our active intruder, uh, active shooter on campus, they have a, a specific training designed for an individual to do that. So they offer a service similar to what you're asking for. Basically, they train you, they train you to go, these are the things you need to look, look at in the engineering and design your layout of your buildings. These are the things you need to look at for active denial type situations. So they have the instructor level course, which is what I have to teach teachers of what we need to do in the event. They also have a course that you can go to that is, these are the things you need to look at to prevent it from happening. These are the things you can do as far as design and implementation of your building and your structures. So they offer something similar to what you're talking about.
Hey, Buck, do they do anything where, I mean, obviously maybe planned through you, they would almost kind of do like a, like a, like an audit of us, like where basically like we say, we think we're good and they have someone coordinate you that actually shows up and like, nope, you got, you know, we failed here or I found the door propped open, or, and do they do anything like that?
I think so, I can find out, I can make that...
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of what we wondered, do we hire a professional, yeah, I mean, service or whoever it is to, to do an evaluation on, on our buildings?
Yeah, coordinated with someone so we don't, you know, we trip something, call law enforcement, but I mean, you know, maybe where the building doesn't necessarily know, but, you know, you guys know and Buck knows or whatever.
Because, you know, you look at, uh, uh, high school campus, I mean, that thing is twenty-four seven, it seems like, and the stuff that's going on.
Absolutely.
And so, um, just looking at, um, you know, what can we put in place to prevent, deter, whatever those scenarios are?
Can I talk now or is this closed?
Uh, it's, it's actually just our discussion now, I mean, you had, you had yours on the prior side, so...
I was trying to ask you guys when I was up there, I didn't really get much response, but, you know, what are you guys' thoughts on LEOs at, at, at every school, you know?
Of what?
Law, law enforcement officers.
Oh, we love our law enforcement officers.
I know, but one in every school.
We have them. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I think that's a part of the evaluation process you got to do, I mean, I think we got to look at all avenues.
I was up there, but I didn't get much response, I know it was, you know, I had a floor, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think you have to look at all avenues, that's why, you know, like say we're looking at what do we need to do to start preparing, to prevent or, you know, to, um, be prepared, to be preventative, to be, you know, all the above. You know, we got to find out answers to all those questions.
Can we leave here tonight with a, a plan for a next step and not just leave it open-ended, you know?
I'm sorry, I...
Can we leave here tonight with a plan for a next step and not just...
Well, that's what we're trying to, that's what, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, trying to get those answers. Can we find out if we have somebody that, I mean, that's, that's what is, that is the step. Yeah, is to find out what evaluations we can get made and what we can do going forward.
I'd like an idea of like, you know, working session, going through that and then, you know, obviously, you know, Robyn just covered what we're doing some with the cameras, but, you know, diving into that, maybe revisiting like, you know, door alarms and then kind of just kind of refreshing all of the signs, like what do we have now? And then what do we think kind of...
You know, I know immediately after that happened, right before the last few days of school, Mr. Leff put out district-wide the reminder to watch our doors, to make sure they're locked, to make sure our classroom doors are shut, you know, not to take those things for granted. I mean, there was instant follow-up from our safety coordinator on that to, to, to make sure we're doing that, to be diligent in people that you see, you know, and stuff to do. So, um, I'd like to see that we get some kind of evaluation going quickly and, um, if we can have somebody do that. And I'm not opposed to the task force and, you know, because I think every, every building is going to be unique in each community. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting there at, at, I get to work at seven AM and I'm watching kids walk to school at seven AM that shouldn't be out at seven AM walking down the street, but there they are, you know, and there's Bud patrolling and, and sitting at the school trying to make sure that those kids, and they're walking from out by my house to the north end of town, to the south end of town, and I have one police officer in Southland City that's trying to make sure all those kids are kept safe. And at the same time, the school couldn't hire a law enforcement officer to be on every street, you know, starting at seven AM. I mean, it's very challenging and, and that's just in Southland City, not counting Rocky Comfort that's thirty minutes away from the nearest law enforcement that could get to them. You know, you know, you got to have a good plan for every single community in each building.
Are there any federal funds available for resource officers or anything?
Well, one time, one time there was, and then that kind of dried up, but, I mean, we'll look into it again and see what's available. And there is some, I mean, federal funding with Esser, it's short-lived, but there's some money there also, um, that can be used, I believe.
State level, any pressure on the state legislature for us? Anything under anything, people ratting their congressmen's and stuff like that?
Yeah, I think that would be important to do. Uh, I haven't heard anything, just, I didn't see anything other than people.
As I say.
I didn't see a file.
As far as addressing it at all? I mean, at least not.
Not yet.
That they're putting out.
Right.
Hey, Doc, one of the, one of the conferences that I'll be going to this summer, they have a specific class on grant writing for SROs that I'll be attending. There, there are some that are still available, and they're based with that class to teach you how to write, what those grants are, how to write, and how to receive, so that'll be something I'll be going to.
And aren't you going to a national?
Yes, that's the one, it's at that conference.
Like in Colorado or something?
Can we set the date for the work session sometime next month, instead of just saying we're going to get together with administrators and meet and kind of kick the can down? Do we have a hard time on that?
Right. Just, yeah. We absolutely can, I mean, typically, when we set work sessions, I'll send out several dates and try to pool everybody to get it, but I absolutely will. We can do it between June, July, we have a end-of-year meeting, uh, June 28th even. I don't know if you want to do it in conjunction with it or not, but that's the next date you guys are scheduled to be here, which is a couple of weeks away.
Would that give you enough time to possibly, it wouldn't?
No, I don't think that's enough time to get with all the staff and.
Summer school going on.
I mean, we can get some ideas, but you've got subs in, and, you know, you don't have your normal, I mean, it's just one of those deals, but we can do our best to try to figure out what we have, um, which I know Josh, I mean, that's one piece of it, that these are the things we have, from the panting buttons, the locks on doors, what classrooms do, you know, in those situations, and, um, I mean, there's a, there's some things to be gained there, obviously. But as far as sitting down with, though, you know, I mean, me personally, if I was teaching chemistry at the high school, I wasn't teaching summer school, and this was going on, I got back in the fall, I would have liked to have been able to share some ideas, and, and maybe we could send communication out to all our staff and say, this is what we're doing, and we'd like to get, you know, their input, we probably do that. I don't know if we get done by, all of it done by June 28th, though, that's only two weeks.
Well, not all of it, some of, I mean, I'd rather sit down and plan and find something that might need fixed before all of our kids are all back to school in the fall.
Well, yeah, and I want people to understand this, I, I know what was said, but there are a lot of good things in place at McDonald County Schools to keep our kids safe, and there's a, there's many, many things that, that we have, uh, that we are proactive in, so, um, I've, I mean, my granddaughter goes to school here, but whatever we can do to improve that, we need to try to improve that. So I, um, you know, we, years ago, we established secure entrances at our campuses to help, you know, with that, and when all that did happen, I said something to Adam about the importance of reminding everybody, because it's easy to lose sight of. Yeah, I mean, but we can absolutely do our best to find out the different things that we have, and, again, the process of trying to get together some sort of, um, communication with those that aren't here right now of what we're trying to do to allow them an opportunity to have input, and then have as much of that as we can by the 28th. I just chose the 28th because that's the next time you guys are here, you can.
I just don't think it needs to just be a one-time thing, it's probably something we should just continually visit about every so often.
Sure, it's going to be something we have to plan and, and implement, and plan and implement.
I think on the 28th, if we can cover what we know, and then, you know, the notice that we can kind of, by then, we probably would know, you know, what are, you know, audit services we have, and I think we'll be a little smarter, I mean, so, yeah, I think, I mean, we could kind of plan, touch base with what we know on the 28th.
Buck, would that give you enough time to see if there's somebody that does an audit-type deal, or somebody that?
I used to learn from that one.
Yeah, and then, then we can kind of set a next session from there.
That's, I mean, that's almost three weeks, but not quite three weeks, so.
Not asking for solutions, just.
I, I think that's important, I mean, I think it's important people know there, there are a lot of things in place to ensure our kids safe. I also think it's very, very important to think through the things that you want to add, and, uh, let's not just throw money at it, let's make sure that they're
It's got to be effective.
Research-based, and, and, uh, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. It is true that all our campuses are unique in themselves, and there are a lot of things out there, and, and our office has started discussing a few things just in general as we hear from other school people out there, other school districts out there, whether it's in Missouri or Oklahoma, or, you know, where it might be, we should discuss this.
Yeah, I mean, I know the back door on the, from the playground in through the, like, the FEMA structure in Southland City, if that door's not sealed, it whistles loudly to where somebody can hear it, you know? Now, there's an issue with, it's got gravel coming in to that deal, and kids tread, tread through the gravel, and sometimes it's just gravel, keeps it from sealing, but it does make a whistling noise that, that people know that that door's not secure, you know, I mean, so, so, yeah, that, we do have things that, you know, we're not just willy-nilly that, you know, I mean, got the, you know.
There's lots, there's lots of stuff that we can do like that, and I, I'm not saying that there aren't going to be things that we need to spend money on, but if you go back and look at school shootings, and go back and look at the last few school shootings we have, they've all, every, every one of them have had some degree of complacency.
Yeah.
And, you know, this one was a door left open, the last one was a kid was suspended and walked on campus, and, I mean, so, yes, there are ways that we can get better, and yes, there are things that we can do and things we can improve security, but there's also things that we as individuals can do better in, as far as training and not being complacent things, that we don't have to spend a dime on.
Absolutely.
It's always been kind of a lifestyle change with the prop rocks and the prop open doors, and, yeah, we grow prop rocks around here, I, I used to load them up every day, drive around, pick them up, and they come back.
Trust me, I know.
I know.
There's some in the backseat of my car right now.
There's, uh, there's also, you know, we need to have a conversation about what we're going to add to these new buildings that we, that we're getting ready to build. I mean, that, those are, those are questions that we're, designers are asking us now, what do you want to add? So, you know, that, that whole community is thinking about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think, I think that's a good point, Doc, you talked about, I mean, maybe, maybe after that, you know, that session at the end of the month, we ought to, you know, with what we have, I mean, we, we ought to, you know, communicate that out in some way, just to, you know, let, let the community know, like, you know, hey, here, here's what we're doing today, and, you know, as, as we can, we can educate them on the next step, but.
Well, and they don't.
Remind them.
They don't know, and that's fair, because they don't know, you know, they just see all this happening in the world, and just as a, a grandpa, you know, what is it do we have, you know? I know more about it because being the superintendent, but the person that's working at the post office in Pineville does not, for the most part, so I would want to be reassured as a parent or a grandparent with children in the school, that we're doing everything we can, just like Taylor did today, uh, coming up here and visiting with us, so, I mean, it makes sense.
We need to add it to our PD, it's going to take diligence on everybody.
Right, yeah.
And like Bob said, propping doors open, good grief, we can't, we're past that age.
Well, you also, you also walk up to a door and knock on it.
Yeah.
Get lost in that. Yeah, you got to change that.
And that's what I mean, it's just a mentality thing now, that we're past that. We don't live in that age anymore.
I know the doors are locked at, at the Pineville Primary, but they're glass, they're glass doors, so, it's good to keep them locked, but again, they're glass, it's not going to stop much for long.
One aspect that hardly anybody's addressing that I've heard is the, the front end, the cause. I mean, uh, we're, we're treating symptoms, maybe that's all we can do, but we've got a sick society, so the fact that we're even having this discussion, is there anything done on the front end to identify these people and?
Right, that's one of the conversations Buck and I had the other day.
That's, we've shifted our focus, you know, I train, every year, we train all the teachers and all the administrators on active, active intruders, active shooters, and we've shifted our focus, a lot of that training, a, a good chunk of that goes into, you, you see these kids every day, you deal with these kids every day, recognizing warning signs, what are the warning signs, what are the mental health issues that we're seeing, and, because the teachers and, and the administrators and, and the people that are with these kids every day, you can see those things, you see those changes, and that, this is a kid that, hey, we need to talk about it. You may have, you may have one piece of that puzzle, and I may have one piece of that puzzle, and then I talk to the principal, and it's about communication and about identifying those kids, because, you know, Derek and I both talk about it, and we say it over and over again, everybody talks about putting, putting a gun in the school, or, or arming teachers, or whatever else. End of the day, that's still one of our kids, even if nobody dies except for the kid that brought the gun in there to do harm, that was still one of our kids. And if we, we've got to do a better job, exactly what you're saying, of identifying those kids. And all this stuff has to happen on the front end, identifying the kid before it ever happens, and stopping from getting in the building, and it's not going to do us any good to wait till a kid gets in the building and kill them. You know, it, we have, we have to do a better job of identifying and denying entry is, is, is what we have to, we've got to focus on those. And that's what we've, that's what we're focused on, our training with teachers, is making sure that we're identifying those problems and, and what to look for, and, and how to react, and who do you talk to about when you see those warning signs.
If I'm not mistaken, every single school shooter there's ever been had a multitude of red flags that were missed along the way. I know as an art teacher, I could spot those kids right off just by the subject matter in their drawing, they made, I mean, if teachers are alert and looking for those clues, a lot of this could be avoided, I think.
They also have those clues through technology, and once they search, if they happen to search the computers that we have now, we have those GoGuardians to be able to track what they're looking at. Matter of fact, Mr. Leonard will send you an email really fast and say, you might want to go talk to this kid.
Again, we'll try to get everybody surveyed the best we can between 28th and 28th.
28th, maybe find out what is available for an auditing purpose from a professional service and?
Just have an update of some sorts at that point, anyway.
Sounds right.
I just, I know one thing that was, in one email that I got this, this week, was talking about training of the substitutes. You know, I don't know, I didn't know if we train our substitutes through that program.
We are required by law to, anyone that's in that, in that building with kids are supposed to go through the same training.
So that's, okay. Okay, good. Sounds like a start?
Do we have stuff in the handbook for, like, teachers propping open doors, or kids propping open doors, or we need to put something in there with disciplinary action that, hey, it's serious, you can't prop open a door?
And the employee, I mean, him, there.
That's going to come back.
There's always a catch-all and.
Come back to us, administrators, I mean, that's just going to have to be something that we'll have to have that conversation at the beginning, and we'll have to have that conversation in the middle, and we'll have to have that conversation in the end. It's just something that, that's not acceptable anymore, but it'd also be somewhere, keys, we may have to be looking for some keys, and those things are a little bit more difficult to get put together, especially when we go into the greenhouse at Rocky Comfort, and she has a key to her classroom, but she may not have a master key to the entire building there, so those are some things that we'll just have to be a little more diligent in what we do. If you want to make a policy, I mean, I guess that would depend, you, I think it comes back to your administrators of your building. My opinion, anyway.
Okay, you got next? All right, thank you for all comments and ideas, and forward from there. Okay, on the foundation report, um, you guys, I got that patched in this time. We, we met with Dusty to talk about ways to utilize our webpage and our Facebook and everything better, to get more stuff out there, to get it more available. We talked about the banquet for next year, uh, we did add Michael Griffith as our newest member to the foundation board. Anyway, we worked on a way to save some money, we, I think Dusty was able to use the, the voting mail-out to, like, all payroll, all the staff that's involved in payroll deduction, that we could do an electronic ballot for them to vote for the members to be back on, which will save quite a bit of money in postage, you know, and time, and, um, anyway, talked about ways that we could try to make the audio and the video better at the banquet, you know, that's a, that's a big issue, we'd have pretty small screen. So, our next meeting on that will be July 28th, that's our annual, annual meeting, that will have our balance returned, we'll get our end-of-the-year budget or finances and everything recorded, and go on for the next year. That's foundation report, Dr. Stanton, comments?
Yeah, just, uh, the budget, uh, finance meeting, the subcommittee, our second meeting, that'll be June 14th at 8:30 AM for the committee members. Uh, the end-of-year budget meeting is scheduled for June 28th at 6:00 PM, uh, which will also have some updates on school safety, and then the last day of summer school is June 30th.
You said 14th, at, at what time?
8:30 AM.
Next Tuesday. That's all, okay.
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session for section 610, 021, 1330.
Motion from Josh, second by John to go into closed session, all those in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody, thank you for.